All right, my fellow Americans, it is time to deliver what was promised and that is today's Town Meeting program, your local talk show brought to you by Cordova Wireless Communications, which happens to be your local provider of cell phones and wireless data services. A great pairing, we think, so that you can enjoy the opportunity to learn more about things happening in Cordova or that affect Cordova. And anytime you have an idea for the program, we're always happy to hear it. The Chamber of Commerce had an idea for the program because we are in shorebird week. This weekend is when it all comes together. And so we have a panel of guests we'll be speaking with here. Kathy Renfelt, Executive Director of the Cordova Chamber of Commerce. Kristi Banks, the Communications and Events Coordinator of the Cordova Chamber of Commerce. And Erin Cooper, who is very busy being the Program Manager for Wildlife Ecology and Vegetation Management with the U.S. Forest Service Chugatch National Forest. And these three and I are looking forward to taking you through some information to get you excited about the Shorebird Festival coming up this weekend. How to register, how it came to be, why do the birds love Cordova? What kind of birds to look for, when and where to find them, all that kind of thing is on the way. So with our thanks again to Cordova Wireless Communications, let us dive in and talk Shorebird Festival on Town Meeting. Kathy, let's start with you for kind of an overview for anybody who's not familiar with this festival and what it's about and how long it's been going on, you know, Shorebird Festival.
Sure, we are pretty excited. The Copper River Delta Shorebird Festival has been going on for over 30 years now. Last year was our 30th anniversary. And because we had to quickly pivot to a virtual festival due to the pandemic, we didn't really get to celebrate it as fully as we would have liked to last year, although we did have a great virtual festival with attendees from all over the country and of larger reach than we've ever had before. There were people that were able to participate that year that had never heard of the festival, let alone tried to participate in it before. So there's definitely some positives that came out of that. But this year, we are doing a hybrid festival, which means that we are going to carry over some of those virtual festival events that were popular last year that will enable people to still participate from wherever they are perched around the world. But we are also welcoming back a small number of in-person attendees to Cordova. And we're excited to do that. We have a lot of safety measures in place and we're working with the Cordova Center, who also has lots of safety measures in place, so we feel comfortable with that. And we're happy because this is one of the great things about the Copper River Delta Shorebird Festival. In addition to the fact that we are celebrating this great feat of migration, this miracle of nature that happens every year, that is so important to the overall ecological health and such a good indicator of good ecological health. The fact that we have this in our community and we can celebrate it is amazing. But what's also great about this festival is it's for a lot of businesses, it's the first time in the year where they're actually getting a little kick of extra customers and a little kick of extra businesses. A lot of the lodging providers and the seasonal stores and restaurants, they kind of time their opening of their season for Shorebird Festival. So this is exciting to be able to again offer that benefit to local businesses and the community of bringing in those extra shoppers and visitors from other parts of the state and beyond.
Okay, so last year obviously was a real challenge, Kathy. How do you feel like it went having to go completely virtual sort of the last minute there? Was it still pretty successful?
I would say it is, it was, yes. It was certainly an adjustment and it had a little bit different feel, the virtual festival last year than our festival usually does. One of the projects that we are excited to do this year is we got a new logo and some new branding for the Copper River Delta Shorebird Festival to celebrate our 30th anniversary. And when we worked with the designers to get that created, the kind of direction that we gave them is that this festival is birdy and it's artsy and it's in this quirky town and it's very community centric. And that, I think, some of those things were hard to communicate to an audience virtually. And it's much easier and it's a much more full experience when folks can come into the community and come into Cordova and experience all the wonderful things that Cordova is, that are just kind of hard to describe in words or even in pictures and videos. So we had a great outreach that was able to happen last year that I think is going to pay off for years to come as far as people being able to hear about the festival and get a little bit of a taste of what the festival is like. We were able to produce all kinds of content. And for folks that aren't familiar with that term, if you have a website or a social media account or if you want to be interacting and reaching out to people virtually through the internet, you need to have pictures, you need to have videos, you need to have types of media that you can share with them to put along with your posts and on your website. And we were able to generate a ton of that last year that we're going to be able to continue to have on our website, in our social media, in our archives for years to come. So that was one huge benefit of it as well. And this year, we have students from the University of Oregon School of Journalism and Communication who are coming, who are here already, that are helping us do even more of that and helping to facilitate some of the parts of the virtual side of the festival this year. Some folks in town may remember that a group from the same college came for our 25th anniversary and they created something called the Science and Memory Project. And you'll still see some of these coloring books around that were generated from that. There's some great media out there that they created for us. And so that was five years ago and that's still kind of paying off, stuff that was created then. And so we're really excited. Patty and Rachel are here from the university to help us with that. And you'll see them around town. They're going to be taking video, they're going to be featuring businesses, they're going to be showing off Cordova, they're going to be showing off the birds. They're going to be trying to capture that aspect of the festival that's hard to capture, which is the community and the fun, quirky, artsy, birdy combination.
Well, you know, it's been interesting too. One of the ironies of all of this has been that, you know, there are organizations that have something maybe, you know, near the edge of the earth like this. Or, you know, I've talked a few times with Gay from the Alzheimer's Resource Agency. And ironically, this need to take things virtual has caused people to realize, wow, we can really expand our reach and communicate with a lot more folks and enable a lot more folks to participate by applying technology. And it's going to be interesting to see how that continues to change the landscape and you get more people involved as a result of this. And we're going to talk with Kristi in a little while about some of the things you mentioned, Kathy, the impact of business and registration and what that comes with. But we need to talk about the stars of the show and that is our feathered friends. And so Erin, that's your department. What are we, you know, people that have been here for a while obviously know, but for anyone who's new or hasn't really dug in and participated, what's out there for us to see?
Well, the Copper River Delta is a pretty amazing place on its own. It's a beautiful spot, but it's also really important for birds. And it's 700,000 acre wetland. And it's situated in such a way on the Gulf of Alaska with the mud flats and the freshwater areas that it provides this incredible habitat for millions of shorebirds. And so during the Shorebird Festival, you're going to see western sandpipers and dunland and leaf sandpipers and some, so those are the small ones. And, you know, and they fly in these huge flocks of thousands of birds. And so sometimes it's a little overwhelming to think, to identify them. But think about it as small birds versus larger birds. And so your small birds, your western sandpipers, dunland and leaf sandpipers, sometimes will be in these mixed flocks. And then you get some of the larger birds and you can see the shorebill dowchers and in these larger, even silvery ones, they look a little larger than ducks sometimes. So, and they use different parts of the wetlands, they're in different parts of the mud flats. And so just pretty exciting.
Yeah, what I want to know though is when there's a big cloud of a million of them flying around there at once, how do they decide who's in charge?
That is one of the great mysteries of life, JR.
Because it always, they look like they're following somebody out there.
Yeah, and it's like they take, somebody in the front takes the cue and they all, they take a turn together and they, it's almost, you know, it's kind of like the sequins or the iridescent adornments that have colors on both sides that really shimmer in the light. They're just, it's a beautiful spectacle.
I had, I remember, I'll never forget the first time I saw them out at Hartney Bay doing that. And, you know, I mean, I had heard, we'd done some interviews and talking about the Shorebird Festival early in the thing. And I didn't know anything about birds or, you know, the ecology of the area at that point. We were so new, but boy, going out to see them, you know, those massive clouds. I mean, it's just, there's, other than maybe sometimes schools of fish that do something similar as a defense mechanism, there's just nothing like seeing them out there. And to be able to share that with a wider audience too. Another big deal, of course, is where and when. If you're going to say go out to Hartney Bay or wherever viewing, I mean, we've been fortunate with our location. Sometimes we'll see a bunch of them just right out there, you know, near where our tower is. But get into the where and when to really do some good viewing.
Well, so the mud flats of the Copper River Delta kind of swing around and, you know, anybody who's navigated with a boat in Orca Inlet can tell you it's a little bit, you know, low tide, it's a challenge. But that also provides great mud flats at Hartney Bay, which you can drive to. So a lot of the areas on the delta, you can't necessarily get to the outer mud flats. But Hartney Bay is a great representation of the mud flats of the Copper River Delta. So you can drive right there and you would want to go like Hartney Bay, Three Mile Bay is another one that has a lot of mud, a great spot, and also some grassy areas. So you have a nice combination. So Hartney Bay, Three Mile Bay, and even, you know, that Odyax Slough area right at the breakwater, mid tide, you know, actually, actually, and then you can go to, so I'll talk about times. So high tide is great because it really, it pushes the birds a little closer. They, you can easily see them. And then, so Three Mile Bay and Hartney Bay are great areas for that, right along White Shed Road. The other spot would be at the breakwater there at mid tide. You know, that's, it's not necessarily, the water will come right up to the breakwater at high tide. So there's not much space for the birds. But if you go a little bit before or after, so you can go to Hartney Bay and then go over to the breakwater and get a different set of birds, so.
Or come over for lunch and just look out our back window.
Oh, for sure, it's a great spot, it's perfect.
We've got plenty of room, we've got plenty of room. But one other thing too now though, when you talk about people interacting with nature, I know something that's been very important for the festival over the years is what we've come to call the bird manners. And there are certain things with pets or vehicles and some of that sort of stuff that we need to avoid because while this is a lot of fun to watch, it's not out there for our entertainment. This is a very important biological process going on. So talk about enjoying your birding, but doing so in a way that you let these very hungry, tired guests do their thing.
Right, some of these birds, I mean, these birds have traveled 6,000 miles or more to get here. And they, it's exhausting. And so when they get here, they are starving and they are feeding frantically. And so I'm just so glad you asked that question, JR, because it is, it's really important. And as part of the festival, it's these wildlife ethics that come into play when we're out viewing wildlife, watching wildlife. And so while you could go out in the flats and sometimes if you stay still, the birds will come right to your feet and if you just don't bother them, you know. So, you know, not to scare up, you know, when you're out there, to be very courteous and the big flocks and try not to push them up. And I think it's a challenge because you want to get closer, but not too close. So, and then if you're out there, stay really still, find a place to just sit down and enjoy it so that, I mean, and you'll have the birds come to you in most cases. When it comes to vehicles like, you know, ATVs and things like that, it's best to just stay off the mud flats during migration. It's not a very long period of time. And so it gives, you know, give the birds a break and give it a pause for a little bit. And then, you know, and you can visit that later. And then one big thing is pets, people and dogs. And some, I would say leave your dogs at home or take them for a walk other places or make sure they're on a leash. If you're going to be out there with your pet, make sure it's leashed. And I wouldn't put it out, I wouldn't bring your dog out onto the flats really. So just, it's not a very, like I said, it's not a very long period of time. But these birds have traveled thousands and thousands of miles and are trying to double their weight while they're here so that they can be in good condition before the nesting period and before they go to the nesting grounds. And I mean, this is a, so this is such an important site. It's a hemispheric site, which means it's the top ranked site, one of the top ranked sites in the world for shorebirds.
Yeah, I was going to say, you know, the fact that Cordova is sort of such a critical spot, what is it about our area that is so important to them?
Well, it's 70 miles of mud. We have 70 miles of mud that are chock full of invertebrates and shorebird food. And so when they stop over here, they are, they will, like I said, double their weight while they're here.
So we're just kind of lucky that somebody decided to plunk a town right in the middle of it, I guess.
Well, you know, what's interesting is that the town really is separated from the delta. While we have access to it, the delta is intact. We have a beautiful intact wetland in our backyard.
Yeah, and to have it so close and so vibrant with all of this activity, yeah, it's pretty amazing. And actually, our Shorebird Festival, as if I remember rightly, has become a model for others that have developed. They've seen how successful we've been and have been able to try them. Are there some other places even around the world that have festivals like this that follow these same birds, Erin?
That's another excellent question, JR. So yeah, absolutely. We have been bringing, so with the Forest Service, we have a branch of the Forest Service called International Programs. And they are promoting resiliency and conservation and economic stability in some of these, in our partner countries. And so ecotourism that we've put together here, the ecotourism model we created in such a small, remote place like Cordova, really fits nicely with the models in some of these remote places in Latin America. So we have had folks from Tierra del Fuego to Panama to Mexico come up, take a look at our festival and then head back down. So we have, they started festivals in Chillaway Island at the tip of Chile. And, you know, Panama is thinking about more of an outreach, you know, more of a community festival. They do more education. So, and Colombia has community festivals. So it's just really, some of the people who have come here have gone back to their home countries and started festivals based on the model that we have here. And it's a real testament to Kathy and her team and the folks that have also have run the Shorebird Festival in the past. But talking about integrating business and economies and community with the local landscape and really having those two work together.
Sure, well, and I mean, you go, you think all the way back to the founders when this was of the festival, when it was a fairly small thing. And then, you know, as it caught on, it grew and more guest speakers and famous photographers and magazine people were fascinated by it. And, you know, here we are today, 30 plus years later, still at it. Now Kristi, you've been waiting very patiently. And as Erin said, one of the goals is to weave the local economy into the local ecology. I guess if that's the right science word, I don't know my science words all that well. But at any rate, the, one of the goals of the festival, as Kathy pointed out, is to, is to kind of, I mean, it's, spring back when there were herring used to be so busy and post-herring, post-spill, that's been very challenging. But the Shorebird Festival has been one of the things that has built this back up. So talk some about how you're doing that, making this a benefit for the local businesses, you know, as well as appreciation of our great spot in nature here.
Absolutely, you know, we are a small community and, you know, tourism is something that helps keep our businesses afloat, especially as a seasonal community. And this time of year, with all of the people coming in to see the shorebirds, it's always given our businesses a big boost. And of course, you know, last year with things going virtual, that our businesses took a bit of a hit and our community took a hit with the lack of people coming to see the shorebirds. And we're very excited to open this back up in a hybrid model. And we do have some people coming back this year. And one of the things that we like to do during our festivals is work with, we call it the Passport Program. And, you know, if you're local to Cordova, you've seen this with other events. But we have our Shorebird Passports this year. And this year, we've actually changed the passport system. Because we have so many people participating virtually, we have upgraded our passport, so to speak. And, and so we are now including online experiences as well as online purchases in addition to the typical stamps in the local shops and stores. So we're kind of excited that people who are virtual are able to participate from wherever they are in the world. And our businesses are going to be getting a bit of a boost here. Another fun thing that we did, we did this here is we created a hand curated Love Cordova box. And it's just a box filled with all sorts of goodies from local businesses. And we've had people purchasing them from around the country. We've had local Cordovans buying them and sending them to family members around the country. And it's just been this wonderful way to get Cordova into the hands of people that maybe aren't coming to Cordova this year. So it's a pretty exciting new adventure and we only have a few of them left, actually. They're selling pretty quickly, so.
Well, it's been, you know, it's been fun over the years, of course, to see that too, whether it's at the holidays or shorebird or in some cases summertime, how much people not from here enjoy receiving things from here, from their friends and family. And how that becomes a special part of their collection of Alaskana or just things that they have from other places. And so is this, let's talk about the registration now. Are these baskets and these gifts, is this part of that or is that a separate thing?
So anyone who wants to participate in the Shorebird Festival can sign up for our free festival. And that includes a lot of online content through our social media pages. There are daily bird diaries. You're going to have access to free kids activities and other fun things. Our regular registration, it's only $50. And that actually comes with a festival care package with a vintage t-shirt, our brand new commemorative book with the program inside. I don't know if you've seen our beautiful artwork for the festival this year, but anyone who pays for that registration also gets our beautiful sticker and a few other goodies in their registration care package. In addition to that, everyone who registers has access to all of our amazing presenters and all of our amazing workshops. Additionally, that registration comes with a discount for Alaska Airlines for flying in and out of Cordova during Shorebird, as well as discounts at local businesses offering events during Shorebird Festival like the Net Loft and Copper River Canvas. So it's quite a bit of a package here. The Love Cordova boxes are separate, but we're pretty thrilled about the registration. It includes quite a bit of content, I'd have to say.
And I presume Kristi, that the best place to get information, you know, sort of access to everything in terms of how it all works is going to be the Chamber's website?
Actually, it's going to be the Shorebird website, which is coppershorebird.com.
Okay, can that be linked through the Chamber site, I assume?
Yes, yep, if you go to cordovachamber.com/events, you can see the Copper Shorebird event and click on that link and it'll take you right to the Copper Shorebird website.
Okay, Kathy, can you talk a little bit about, if you would, about some of the assets on that Shorebird site specifically?
Yeah, so if you go to the Shorebird website, you'll be able to get a preview of all the presenters that we have this year. So our keynote speaker is Scott Widenstall. And he has a brand new book coming out called A World on the Wing. And that is about this global odyssey of migration that these birds go on. He has traveled everywhere from the Yellow Sea in China to the breeding grounds of these birds in Alaska where they go after they are done here. And he has some really great, interesting stories, not only about how impressive this migration is and all of the sign, almost scientifically impossible, just hard to believe things that these birds are able to do to push themselves to be able to migrate over these great distances. But he also has some really great, interesting stories about how people and countries are interacting with this migration in ways that are trying to empower it and preserve it. Because birds and migration, they're, you know, closely tied to many other aspects of ecology that are important. And, you know, migratory birds can be a very good indicator of overall ecological health. And so if you have strong, healthy bird migrations, that's really important. So these countries are taking notice of it. And from everywhere, from, you know, Citizen Science, one person, all the way up to, you know, whole governments that are taking action. So that's really going to be a super interesting talk. So he is joining us virtually this year. So whether you are in Cordova or you're joining us virtually, that's something that you can tune in for online. And for speakers like him and our other international speakers that I'm going to talk about in a moment, those are all part of our paid registration. So you can do the free virtual registration, which gives you the basic stuff like getting the, you know, migration updates on our social media pages and, you know, participating in some of the activities that we have on our festival webpage that are available through our partners throughout the flyway. Like there's, you can learn about shorebird journaling and there's free kids activities that you can do virtually. You can, you know, learn and take a Shorebird ID class online, things like that. So those are free, but these speakers and these presentations are part of the paid registration. So we have Scott Widenstall as our keynote. And we also have joining us from Mexico, Jonathan Vargas. And then we also have Diego Luna, who is from Chile, is that right, Erin? And then he's going to be presenting along with Dr. Nathan Senter, who is an American, and they're going to be presenting together about Sonya and Godwitz and some projects that they've collaborated together on, which should be very interesting as well. We also have, for those of us like me, I mean, I've helped put on or put on a Shorebird Festival now for six years, I still have a hard time identifying some of these birds. And part of it is that I've always been too busy organizing the festival to actually go out and bird during these key moments.
Imagine that.
But there are, you know, there's folks in town that we live within this amazing phenomenon of migration. How neat if you could go out there and enjoy it more fully by being able to understand what these birds are and then you could go home and learn more about them and say, oh, this, you know, this had Sonya and Godwitz came all the way from here to here to here and now it's here, that's pretty neat. So you can learn how to identify these birds a little bit better. Erin Baumann is going to be teaching that class. And he is an amazing bird guide. He's, folks in Anchorage, he's really well known there for his bird guiding and he now is a Cordova resident. So we're really grateful to have his participation. Milo Burton is going to be teaching a photography workshop. And we're also going to have all kinds of other online courses as well. And Erin Cooper is going to be giving a great talk about the ecology of the Copper River Delta, which I think is a really interesting thing for folks that are journeying virtually as well as locally to just learn more about. I mean, this is the place where we live, this is our home. And how neat to learn about how that is even more special than maybe you knew before. And so Erin Cooper's talk is going to be live in person at the Cordova Center on Friday night. So that is exciting to have an event that people can come to live. We are, the Cordova Center does require masks, so and there's going to be a limited capacity. So if you are registered for the festival, that is going to be a requirement. You have to be registered for the paid festival. And then there's, we'll send you a form where you can RSVP to which events you want to go to. So you'll have to RSVP to that and that way we can make sure we don't go beyond our capacity for these types of events. So the events that are going to be in person like that are going to be Erin Cooper's Ecology Talk on Friday night, Erin Baumann's Shorebird ID class and Milo Burton's Photography Class are all going to be like that. And then also Daddy Widman over at the Net Loft is putting on some really awesome, as always, shorebird hand crafting workshops. Those are also going to be at the Cordova Center. And you also have to pre-register with the Net Loft for those. And then Jessica Hoover is going to be putting on a Copper River Canvas class in person at the Cordova Center as well. And you'll need to contact her to get registered for that. So you can learn more about all of those activities on our website. We have a full schedule of events. If you register, even if you only register for the free virtual festival, that'll enable us to get you a schedule of all the virtual events that are happening too, so that you can make sure you don't miss a moment of that.
Good, and just to put in another plug for the Cordova Center too, how nice to not have to try to find classrooms in the Prince William Sound Community College to squish into. And I mean, not that we, not that we ever didn't appreciate, you know, their assistance and CHS was accommodating for bigger events. Of course, we can't have some of the big giant events, as you've been saying, because of the, Of course, we can't have some of the big giant events, uh, as you've been saying, because of the, because of the limitations on, on getting too many people close together. But, um, yeah, what a, what a delightful facility to be able to, to integrate into this. You know, while of course you have that big view out there over the harbor, that's got to be pretty neat for, you know, the visitors that are, they're able to come in. Erin, let me ask you, uh, something here. You know, obviously we talked about a lot of assets that are on the, on the Chambers, um, website and on the Shorebird website. Are, are there any other, uh, assets that you can think of that maybe the Forest Service has or something for people who want to kind of prepare themselves and, and warm up for, for what they, uh, want to see? Or is, is most of what they need just sort of available through that, that shorebird site, do you think?
Well, I think the Shorebird site is well done and has a lot of resources available. If somebody were to, um, there is this tool out there for people who are really into birding called eBird. And there's all sorts of lists. If, if people really wanted to see the, the, the species of birds and where they were seen, this site will tell you everything. So eBird is an excellent, excellent site. Another good place, if they wanted to read the life histories of birds, is the Cornell Lab of Ornithology has a All About Birds page and, and it gives them kind of some in-depth insight into the bird, um, the birds that you'll see here.
Okay, good. So people that want to do their homework absolutely can. That's fun.
Oh, you can dive deep.
Yeah, I would imagine. It's a great, big, wide world of web. Well, let's, uh, let's kind of maybe go into the, the final round here and, um, as we start to wrap it up. Christie, any additional thoughts as you've heard the other two speak or anything else you thought of that, that people ought to know as far as registering or any of it?
Yeah. Even if you're planning on attending for free, whether you're local or around the country, we really appreciate it if you hop onto the website and register for the festival. Even the free registrations, it's really good to have that information to, to know what people want to see, what they're interested in. So we can always make this festival better. In fact, one really amazing thing about going hybrid this year and having so many people register is that we have virtual participants in 31 states and in nine different countries right now. And the registrations just keep rolling in and it's really amazing to see how big of a reach this little festival in Cordova has. So we really do want people to hop on and register, um, even if it is just for the free events. Just hop on, let us know where you are. Um, that, tell us what you're interested in. You know, in addition, we have some really amazing things happening on our Shorebird website. We have beautiful 2021 T-shirts for this year, as well as really cool lens wipes. That's something that we've heard a lot about from the birders over the years. I just need a lens wipe that clips to something. So guess what, guys? We have them for you this year. Um, just a whole variety of items. We had our 30-year commemorative book printed. It's a 20-page, full color commemorative book that has our program in it this year. And it's, it's just this beautiful display that talks about the beauty of the delta, the birds, the uniqueness of Cordova, gets into the history of our festival and just highlights the uniqueness that is the Copper River Delta Shorebird Festival.
Good. So, uh, the, the merchandise has always been a really fun part of it too. I love, you know, anytime we travel, I always take an extra empty suitcase because I know I'm going to get a whole bunch of stuff, Erin. So, uh, yeah, having that variety of, of things, again, from convenience items to, to sometimes beautiful artwork, to, you know, coffee mug, whatever. And it's going to be fun to, to see, you know, what, what you're rolling out. Anything else that's, that's new or special this year on the merch front?
Yes. Um, some of our items are only available, uh, online. Uh, we, we had a big variety. We learned from last year that we can have a huge variety of things that are available online. But we also have a few things that are available in Cordova and online. So just head over to the website and give it a gander. Some really, really fun items this year and people are soaking up the merchandise. And we have it, we have the local merch available at the Chamber of Commerce office right now. And starting on Thursday, when the shorebirders come in, we will have some of that set up at the Cordova Center as well when people are checking in.
Okay, good. Erin, how about you? Any final thoughts? Uh, what do you want to kind of leave people with here as we move to a close?
That, well, this, you know, the Copper River Delta is just, um, a jewel in the south central of Alaska. And, um, uh, an amazing wetland. And I, I encourage folks to, um, attend many of the talks. What a great opportunity to participate and learn more about their backyard and to be respectful of the, the wildlife as they're out and about there. And, and Cordovans are usually pretty good about that, I'd have to say. But, um, just get, use this as an opportunity to explore some, uh, uh, an amazing place that people travel thousands of miles to see that's right in our backyard.
Yeah. Well, Kathy, I never have to ask if you have any final thoughts, uh, cause yours could probably take another half hour. Cause you are rich with knowledge, but anything you want to leave us with here?
I just want to encourage people to, um, participate in the Shorebird Festival. You know, birding is kind of a, a niche activity that, um, not everybody's into, but there's just so much to see. You know, I've always, um, said since I've been part of the festival, I'm not a birder, but I enjoy the festival. There's this, um, there's just this beauty to being, um, witness to this spectacle of nature that's happening. You know, we've, what, Ethan Kelly Weaverling, um, was one of our guides for many years and he kind of coined the term avian aurora. Just as the, the way that the birds, when they flock in the sky and they, they kind of move around on the ground, they almost look like a school of fish, how they flash their white bellies and it creates this wave through the birds. It's just really breathtaking. Um, and so just, I encourage folks to get out and enjoy that. And, um, if you're going to participate in any part of the festival, like, like Christie said, it would help us tremendously for you to just get on the website real quick and register. Uh, that, that just helps us be able to track our numbers. We have, uh, sponsors that, um, are the ones that enable us to put on this festival that benefits the community in so many ways. And they, um, love to know how many people participated. That's a really important piece of information for us to be able to share with them. So just encourage folks to, you know, find ways to participate and to, to register and come see us at the Cordova Center this weekend. We'll be there, um, during some regular hours and have an info table and have some merch out. We, we kind of only have, um, like two or three versions of shirts and lens wipes and stickers. The rest of, of the merch, like Christie said, is available online. And I also just want to thank all of the sponsors and the festival partners that, that work with us every year to put this on. You know, from, from the chamber, we do a lot of the, you know, organization work, but we get a lot of help and funding from the US Forest Service. We get a lot of great, um, diversity of events and, um, parts of the festival that are, have just become so much more robust and vibrant because of the participation of the Prince William Sound Science Center and the Net Loft and all the local businesses that sponsor and participate. So thank you so much to all of them. And I really want to encourage businesses to consider having shorebird specials or putting their, their bird centric and, and, you know, outdoor stuff forward and towards the windows to try to get those birders in. We want to see, um, how, how many, uh, interactions we can get. And, and we really want to find ways to, to have this festival, uh, support this community in positive ways. And we're happy to do that.
And if any of them would like to strategize on that, what to put out, how can I spruce it up? I assume you got, I'm talking about the businesses now. What can I do to attract these people? Can they get in touch with you for that?
Absolutely. They can call the Chamber. They can message us on Facebook. They can message me or Christie personally. And one more thought before we leave, we almost forgot, we are having a festival raffle this year, like we've done a couple of times before, that include two round trip tickets anywhere Alaska Airlines flies. So you could win two round trip tickets anywhere Alaska Airlines flies through our raffle. And this year you can buy your ticket online. And, um, so that's what you want to do. You want to head to our Shorebird Festival website or to our Facebook or Instagram page and find that link to buy your ticket online. Or if you come to the festival info table, we'll have a QR code that, code that you can scan with your phone to bring that up on, on your phone and buy your tickets then. And this is a great fundraiser for the festival. It's sponsored by Alaska Airlines with a great, um, you know, supporter of the festival. And then the second place prize is a pair of Vortex Diamondback binoculars. So that's two great prizes that you can win. Tickets are very affordable and we're only going to sell, you know, um, a certain amount of tickets. So it's, it's really good odds. So I hope that people consider, even if you don't take part in anything else, um, go and buy a raffle ticket to, to help support the festival. That'd be great.
And that makes it all work for future years too, obviously, which is, uh, you know, which is a big deal. As does that registration, you know, you mentioned, uh, how the sponsors, particularly your major sponsors are curious to, to see, you know, how, how well their investment was used. That also keeps, helps, helps them be interested in doing that in future years. So we can continue to enjoy this. Ladies, thank you all of you very much. Kathy, Erin and Christie, uh, much appreciated. And, uh, we hope it's a, it's a big success this year.
Thanks, JR.
And that will do it for today's Town Meeting Program, All About Shorebird with Kathy Renfelt, the Cordova Chamber of Commerce Executive Director, Christie Banks, the Chamber of Commerce Communications and Events Coordinator, and the wisdom of Erin Cooper, who is Program Manager for Wildlife Ecology and Vegetation Management at the US Forest Service, Chugatch National Forest. We appreciate them all coming together to participate and get you excited about shorebird coming up this weekend, not only to see the millions and millions of feathered friends, but also to kind of wake ourselves up and celebrate our local businesses too. One of which is Cordova Wireless Communications, the sponsor of this program, not only providing the high-tech services, but also with their sister operation CTC, bringing in millions of dollars for the Cordova economy. We don't have to make anything or generate it ourselves. They import it, circulates through the town. And if you were to ask me, nothing not to like there. So thank you, Cordova Wireless for the sponsorship. Thank you listeners for joining us and everybody have a great shorebird weekend. All the rest of your 10 a.m. hour programming and features is on the way, if perhaps a bit delayed. And we'll see you next time for Town Meeting on KLAM.